I would like to advise all those present that notice of this regular meeting on November 9th, 2022, has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act of the State of New Jersey. Notice of time and place of this meeting has been included in the annual notice of meetings, which was posted and filed with the city clerk and with the Jersey Journal and the Star Ledger. An additional notice of time and place was posted and filed with the city clerk on November 7th, 2022. The regular meeting of the Municipal Council of the City of Bayonne is now in session. Ms. Pedina, please call the roll.
Mr. Booker?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Ms. Weimer?
Here.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Here.
Please rise for the plate.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item up is a resolution postponing the second reading and public hearing of an ordinance referring the planning board to the redevelopment plan to the planning board for consistency review for the redevelopment plan for a property located at 69-73 LaFanti Way and adopting said redevelopment plan pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. Second reading and public hearing has been moved to the meeting of December 14th. It is moved by Councilman Booker. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Oh two is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter Three, Police Regulations, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held September 21st, 2022, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at the meeting of October 16th, was amended and is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And the council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. Any speakers on oh two?
I have a question.
Come on.
A gentleman at the last council meeting brought up residents carrying firearms and, you know, with their family, et cetera. Did anybody get back to him? And if so, what was the outcome? Is he allowed to carry, you know, if he gets redirected via traffic into a park, et cetera? Did anybody get back to the gentleman?
So, I don't know if anybody got back to that gentleman. I don't know who that gentleman is.
You don't remember?
Do you know who that is? Because I don't know.
He spoke, he spoke to you, Gary. You said you were going to look into it and get back to him. He was concerned, he brings his nieces to the park, and you told him that there was no firearms allowed in the park?
No firearms allowed in the park, and that ordinance stands.
Right. But, but if he gets side-directed because of construction or an accident and he goes through the park and he gets stopped, what's going to happen to him?
So, the answer is if he gets side-directed, it would most likely be by law enforcement?
Yes.
And so, he would not be under, he would have to leave immediately. He wouldn't be allowed to stay in the park under that ordinance.
Okay, but nobody got back to him?
Did he leave his phone?
I don't, I don't know.
That is what I explained also at the meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
I'll move.
And a second?
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
I'll move.
Sorry. I can't take that.
Just got to put money in the jar, man.
It's my granddaughter. Sorry. And on the motion to close, may I have, would you like to move it?
Go ahead.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
I mean, on motion of final passage, Mr. Booker. Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Oh three is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 21, Health Regulations, which was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held October 16th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of November 9th, and is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by council, the council president giving the ordinance second reading. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on second reading, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 21, Health Regulations. And the council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
Yes, sir.
I'm the pigeon guy, John Piggins, C.C.P.A., 123 West 15th Street. I just, I just want to say, I want to thank you for, you know, agreeing to my amendments to it, to allow us homing pigeon guys to continue to have pigeons in the City of Bayonne. That'd be, that's really great. If there's anyone have any questions about it before you vote, just let me know. I mean, that's the reason I'm here.
You convinced us.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Quick question. You didn't bring Mike Tyson with you, did you?
No.
Anyone else? No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move it. Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it. Second.
And on final passage, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Oh four is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, State of New Jersey, approving a declaration of a sidewalk easement from 22nd Street Bayonne Owner LLC to the City of Bayonne relative, related to Block 451, Lot 1.01, which was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held October 16th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of November 9th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by Councilmember Perez, given the ordinance second reading. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution for second reading, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, State of New Jersey, approving a declaration of a sidewalk easement from 22nd Street Bayonne Owner LLC to the City of Bayonne, Relative to Block 451, Lot 1.02. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. Any questions on oh four? No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
I'll move.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
I'll move. Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Oh five is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter Seven, Traffic, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held October 16th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of November 9th, and is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution, given the ordinance second reading, is moved by the council president. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter Seven, Traffic. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
Is this oh five, you're on, Madeline?
Yes, I am. Did you want to speak on it?
No.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move it. Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it. Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Oh six is another ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter Seven. It was also introduced at the meeting of October 16th, was published in the Jersey Journal, and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of November 9th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution ordering the second reading of the ordinance is moved by Councilmember Carroll. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter Seven, Traffic. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance the opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
Ms. Kuduski.
Sorry, but Ms. Mauer's not here. What is this about? Various parking fees from finance? Are we increasing? What are we doing?
Yes, there are certain fines and violations that haven't been updated for 20 years, and in a review with the municipal court, there were amendments to the fines that were, raising one or $2, in one case, it was $3 or $4, but for the most part, they're minimal raises to the fines.
And what about yellow lines, fire hydrant parking, double parking? Is that included?
I don't.
Because there's a lot of that going on in Bayonne as well, so.
We have substantial penalties for all of those right now. The question, you know, what you're talking about is whether they're, if they.
Bus stop panty cat parking are all included in there, too.
So, we just need to enforce them. The law is there and the ordinance is there.
We already have ordinance for all of this. This just increases the fees somewhat. There are some that are statutory, Gail, that we can't raise, but in any instance that hasn't, there hasn't been an increase in quite a while. We've increased some of the fees.
Yeah, and I've been told the last raise was 2004, so it's roughly 20 years.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move it. Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it. Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Oh seven is another ordinance amending Chapter Seven, Traffic, and it was also introduced on October 16th, was published in the Jersey Journal, and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of November 9th, and is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. Resolution, given the ordinance second reading, is moved by Councilmember Booker. Mr. LaPalooza, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter Seven, Traffic. And the council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
Ms. Kuduski.
So, does this mean that Kennedy Boulevard is going to be included in this new revised ordinance? Because a lot of things happen on Kennedy, and I know the county's responsible, but as we all know, the county doesn't do a lot for the city, especially when it comes to snow removal. And it's expected that we'll have approximately 25 inches of snow this winter, so I'm just wondering if anybody is in contact with them to make sure that the taxpayers on Kennedy get serviced properly this year?
So, Kennedy Boulevard is still a county road. This ordinance is for representatives of repair, construction, contractor individuals?
But it says snow plowing, too, Gary. It says snow plowing as well.
In the case of special instances, like you have JCPN L or PSENG, Jay Fletcher Kramer, it's really not what you're talking about, like basic services being rendered. This is pertinent to them rendering services and what they have to do or not do, and then what we, if there is a construction crew out there and somebody violates the terms of the regulations.
Does it have to do with, for example, the movie that's being done downtown where people couldn't vote?
I guess I could say that if it's a special event, maybe it'll be covered under here. I couldn't be specific with you, but, but yes.
Is filming, is filming a movie a special event?
If they're impacting traffic, yes.
Okay, because people couldn't vote, they were chased away yesterday because they had cones all over the place downtown. They were getting yelled at for double parking because they had gazillion cones and residents didn't have any place to park. And the kids are off from school this week. So, the parents may be off as well, so we have to think outside the box and look forward and not just for that time period. So, please take that into consideration.
This ordinance is more about fee structure for when services have to be rendered for those garbage containers and things like that.
Okay.
Oh eight is amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne.
We didn't vote, the final vote.
Oh, that's right. Don't jump totally ahead. How about a motion to close?
I'll move. I'll make the move.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And ordinance, a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it. Second.
Yeah, last night, it's getting to me. And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Now, oh eight, in our last Chapter Seven amendment, which was also introduced October 16th and published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of November 9th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by Councilmember Perez, given the ordinance second reading. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Aye.
And on the resolution, Ms. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter Seven, Traffic. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. Any questions on oh eight? No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
I'll move. Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
I'll move. Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye. Before we go to the public comments section, I wanted to read a statement I have about the absorption rates and the study and give you some background on that. So, since 2009, the City of Bayonne has been through a renaissance of growth after many decades of decreasing population, loss of jobs, and the lack of local opportunities. This change slowly occurred over time, such as the closure of the Texaco plant in the 1980s, closure of the Moppy in the late 90s and early 2000s, and the closure of Best Foods in the late 2000s. I'm a lifelong resident of Bayonne. I'm a small business owner who chose to raise my family here, and I can personally speak about the ups and downs of Bayonne and the ups and downs that the community has faced. We all know friends and family members that grew up here and have fond memories of Bayonne, but for different reasons, moved out of town. There has been some fear that the values of the town will be lost as redevelopment occurs throughout the city and our community, and that community itself will be a thing of the past. Bayonne has had a population growth over the past decade to over 70,000 people. This growth in population is a direct result of the development occurring all over our beloved city. In order to evaluate the impact of our community, the council and administration asked for a pause on residential development. The council specifically asked for an absorption study to find out if the units built were being filled and if more units can be maintained without jeopardizing the stability of our community. We can ponder the future of Bayonne, and I feel the future is promising. The residential development impact on Bayonne needed to be studied, and this council made the study our first priority. After looking at the numbers, the future of the city's well-being is encouraging. Before stating the preliminary findings of this study, I want to clarify a few terms and concepts for everyone's benefit. I will mention what an absorption rate is, what an occupancy rate is, and briefly explain how these rates are evaluated amongst banking and building industries. These rates are important to understand the health of a community, buildings, and what impact it will have on the city's revenue. First, an absorption rate is the amount of housing stock a community has available to sell or lease and how quickly it is being sold or rented. Absorption rates provide information on the leasing rates of a rental market or an individual property over a time period known as the absorption period. Next, an occupancy rate is the number of units being occupied over the total amount of units available. High occupancy rates show the demand for people wanting to live in that area. Since 2009, 20 residential developments have been constructed and have people living in them. 2,978 units have been built, with 92.6% of those units being occupied. This number includes buildings that are currently in their lease-up phase. The average stabilization for buildings that have been leased up is about 94.6% occupied. The lease-up period is important because that is an indicator of the absorption. The buildings currently in their lease-up period, which the industry standard takes 12 months to lease up a building, that data includes that buildings are being leased up at a breakneck pace of five to six months. There is one example of a building being 2/3 occupied within three months of opening. When you look at the average stabilization, the percentage is about 94.6% occupied. To put this in perspective, for a building to be considered stabilized, according to Fannie Mae, a federal government-created corporation tasked with lending money to mortgage lenders, the minimum occupancy rate for Fannie Mae to issue a multifamily loan is 75% occupancy. With that stated, the city's occupancy rate for new construction is well in excess of the standard. The occupancy rate is also in excess of the 10-year historical average of 91.372%, according to the data source for Rutgers University, New Jersey Data Book. A full presentation from our professional will follow to detail their findings, but the preliminary findings are extremely promising for the pause on development to end after more discussions with the administration and my council colleagues. I'd like to remind everybody, there is a five-minute comment period for each speaker, and it's not a question-and-answer session. Thank you.
First speaker is Cheryl Riscott. Cheryl Riscott, 399 Avenue C. I'm addressing this to Governor Murphy and Mayor Davis. I feel like I'm in jail on the street. This Michael Boschwick, my old boyfriend's new friend, that's doing this movie about me and trashing my name and using his profession to hurt me, which almost caused me in my life three times. Stop breathing needs to stop. If anyone, as far as the police, have anything, any questions to ask me, feel welcome. But what is going on? He's ruining the town. The town is filthy dirty. I'm tired of hearing comments behind my back. Thank God I'm the person I am, because somebody would have been backslapped. And I'm serious. I cannot take no law of what I'm dealing with. I can't go in my apartment because of a substance that's all over my glasses. It's a smell. It's making me choke. The same thing in Bayonne Housing Authority. I can't wear shoes anymore because of my body is changing. And I'm asking Governor Murphy to get in touch with me. Stop worrying about the weed and everything else that's going on. You're on the front page of the Jersey worrying about marijuana when people's lives are at risk. And I saw Mayor Davis today and called out to him. He turned his head and ran. It's disgusting. I'm human, just like the rest of yous. Nobody's better than me, and I'm not better than you. I always loved Bayonne. I never had a problem in this town until two people, Mike Quintella and Michael Boschwick, came into my life. And if you're not happy with who you are, don't take it out on me. And if there's anything else that I've done that made us... First of all, there's nothing nobody could do where they're gonna be... What's the word? Subject to a chemical or anything else and put somebody in the street to die. That's exactly... And I'm tired. I'm tired of coming up here and humiliating myself and speaking to you guys the way I am, because it's not you. I overheard too many conversations hanging around in Benantys. And that's why I'm saying I'm 100% sure of what I'm saying. It's Governor Murphy is running the show. And so I'm not afraid. I'm not afraid of anybody that has money. You're gonna kill somebody, go right ahead, because he's watching, and he's been watching over me. I survived three breathing, almost died three times and stopped breathing, and I'm a survivor. So, I need... I'm... This tape I'm gonna order, I wanted to go out to Governor Murphy. It's disgusting. I know the police can't do anything. You guys can't do anything, but I'm damned if Michael Boschwick, Joseph Scudder's new boyfriend, is gonna trash my name because he was in... Out of jail, I don't know how many times a week. Don't take it out on me, because you're not happy with yourself. And I'm sorry, Council, but I cannot... I cannot live in the street. I need to go into an apartment, into my apartment. I lost everything I had, including my friends and family, because of him and the money he's making right now. And he's making that money through myself, Joseph Scudder, and Quintella. And maybe the state helped him out. And that's all I have to say. I have a little more to say. I don't think... First of all, I don't think this person would hear it. He might hear it through somebody. But if he went up to the detectives and had something to say about me, his name is Tony, he better go back and say what he did to me. That's gonna stick with me for the rest of my life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gail Gadesky.
First and foremost, there was never a pause on development, so that needs to be corrected. Good evening again. I'd like to first congratulate the new representatives of the Board of Education. I understand there was 10,544 votes cast yesterday. I don't have to go through all the facts between this election and the election in June. Just read the article in the Hudson Reporter. It states all the facts. As a reminder to all the elected officials, it wasn't a landslide for the administration's election in June, and the reason I am saying this and what other people are saying in this town. This town is deteriorating. We keep building, and the infrastructure keeps getting weaker and weaker. The morale at City Hall is as low as it can possibly be. Besides the crime that we're seeing, which is sad since we have three law enforcement retirees in this administration, and unfortunately, our finest work... Our finest are working their behinds off, still don't have a contract. Our water and sewer issues continue. Pretty soon, it's not gonna be able to hold, and I do hope I'm around to say, "I told you so." On a separate topic, I would like to thank you, Ms. Weimer, for your response to my emails. I just hope that you, Jackie, will, going forward, use your own voice prior to making any decisions that impact the city. Not just those who voted for the elected, but all residents. We need to do what's best for all, and right now, it doesn't look like we are. Driving around the city with traffic, with all the construction going on, I noticed the majority of workers aren't wearing hard hats. Don't we have an inspector to make sure things are going according to regulation? Checking sidewalks and other areas, making sure that they're fitting with the city requirements? Maybe a call to OSHA needs to take place. Further, I never did get an official answer to the crane issue. However, I guess in some ways I did. Since nobody responded, the answer, of course, is no. We are not following the law that was voted and approved by the council. Is anybody inspecting to make sure that this is being done? God forbid somebody gets hurt. Development within regulation must take place. I haven't seen any inspectors unless they are called upon to come and take care of business, which they have been doing, but you don't see them doing their day-to-day like they used to. Although there's many ordinances pertaining to the safety and concerns of the residents, we're more concerned about holding people to five minutes on public comments. Or they'll be removed by a police officer. Yet, the administration gets to have seven, eight meetings before this meeting. You have the behind-close-door meeting. You have the developer meeting. You have planning. You have the planner. You have the engineer. You have the technical review committee. You have the pink sheet review. You have the pre-agenda. You have the pre-council. You have the pre-caucus, and then you're ready to vote, when we're just sitting here trying to get some information from you. I understand that public comment cannot be made on the first reading, but I do understand that we're obligated to provide the public with the full, full reading as the next day. Is that correct?
No. Well, I provided. It's up.
It's up.
It's online, and it's posted.
Okay. There may be a resident that may have some ideas. We need to know what's going on. What happened at the Oak Street meeting? I'm a senior citizen. I may want to move into the Oak Street project. Aren't I... Don't I have the right to know about what took place for the remediation of contaminated soil? Only a handful of people were there. Do your job, please. Do what you promised. Pause development. Have town halls so people know what's going on. I haven't seen any community quality-of-life town halls in this city since you took over.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Gadesky. We appreciate your comments.
I still have one more paragraph, Gary.
Sorry. Five... We had eight minutes extra last month.
Last month? You were way over five minutes when you gave that absorption policy.
That's right.
Ms. Gadesky.
This is our council meeting.
Oh, it's your council meeting. It's not ours?
I said our council meeting.
Right, and I have a right to finish what I say.
Please.
There he goes, the police officer.
Robert DeMonico?
Yeah, let it go. Good evening. My name is Robert DeMonico. As stated, I'm here with my wife Renee DeMonico and also store owner Parrish Choshi, who owns Sweet Neighbors Grocery that's on 21st Street and Avenue A. I'd like to thank, first of all, Ms. Weimer for all her efforts. Thank you so much. My wife has corresponded with your emails. And I also have, if the other council members want, petition... Signed petitions from people on the block of some of the changes that we want to see made. Some of those changes are, we want to see the block beautified, just like you have on the light rail stops on 34th Street. Put some flags, maybe, coming up the block. Have a better presence of keeping things clean. We started seeing some of that already because of efforts of Ms. Weimer, but we still need to do more. This is like a gateway block that people coming off the light rail, and this is what they see, is there's a lot of garbage, some seedy people that we can really use some security coming down that block, back and forth, and this is 21st and 22nd. I also like to note that there's an apartment there on our street, which is 51, which has garbage receptacles out on the street. I've never... I've been living there since 1995. As far as I know, you're not allowed to have receptacles in front of your house on the street or anything. It's blocking the traffic that goes back and... The foot traffic that goes back and forth from the light rail. And just thinking, with the time when we get snow, that space is even smaller. One receptacle is six foot high and about four foot wide, and there's another one that's about four or five foot high, same width. That my neighbor, who is a nurse working at Jersey City Medical Center, came out at 6:00 in the morning to go to work, and she's finding people defecating and urinating on the side of these receptacles because they can be hidden from the public. They could also jump out at somebody who's not on their game, walking back and forth to work. And myself, I work on night shift at Jersey City Medical Center, walking out to my house, and I see unsavory people. It's like a place that you can hide. So, with that, I also have another neighbor, because they're doing it, up the street, right off of 444 Broadway, who's also putting out three receptacles. This practice has to stop. I never did it, and all the years I've been there since 1995, and why are people allowed to do it now? I don't think anything's changed. But I'd like to thank you all for really helping us out, Ms. Weimer. Hopefully, you're gonna continue doing the job like that and make our block better.
If you repeat the address, I apologize.
I'm sorry?
51, but I didn't get the address.
51 East 21st Street.
And then 444 Broadway. And Mr. DeMonico?
Oh, there's also a light right in front of that address, one of the fancy lights that the city had installed. It hasn't been lit in years. If we can have somebody correct and fix that, you know, that'll also help with some of the security. And also, maybe put blue lights in the street to help illuminate that block a lot more than what it is. Like I said, you shouldn't be scared coming off the light rail. And also, because it's coming two hours ago, the weekends, when the traffic comes out of the light rail in the evening, is a very rowdy crowd. Just police presence would help calm down some of that craziness that's going up and down the block.
Well, Mr. DeMonico, I want you to know that two days a week, I come off that light rail.
So, for your safety as well as mine.
I know that.
Should I leave this with you?
Yeah, I'm gonna come and get that from you.
Thank you.
You can leave it with the clerk for now.
You can leave it with Madeline. Thank you. And while you have a few minutes left, I'm gonna infringe on your time. And I think Director Cotter is here, and I did speak with him when I received Renee's email. And I believe what I found was those receptacles were allowed because there's no passage to your backyard to allow for you to maintain your garbage receptacles and easily take them to the street. Am I correct in that, Tommy?
Yes, and it's not just on 21st Street. It's other locations around town where the only place they have them is along the front of the building.
My question, though, and I apologize for not coming to you earlier, because I did see Renee's email. So, there is one, and I did drive by. It's six feet tall, and it does... You can absolutely hide behind it. It's probably six feet tall and perhaps three feet wide.
Jackie, let's wrap this up.
If there is... Are there restrictions on the size also, because I was uncertain?
That I'm aware of. I could check it out.
There's not. Okay. So, we'll look into that, and then I'll go ahead and get back.
Well, maybe, because you both just said that, maybe you should have like a uniform standard that the city can impose, that if you're gonna have to have this, this is what you need to have. Maybe not come out four feet, just enough room for a garbage can.
And I certainly don't want to infringe on everyone's time, but that's absolutely something that we'll discuss and get back to you.
We'll definitely follow up with you on that.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Mike Morris.
Good evening. Mike Morris, 123 Avenue C. Just to touch on a point that Ms. Gadesky mentioned regarding the Oak Street project with the Bayonne Housing Authority. Number one, and most importantly, it was a very informal meeting. It was not done in secret in any way. I was informed by a friend of mine, and I happen to be in the area, so I decided to stop by myself. I thought it went very well. My understanding of it was that there was no specific projection date for the anticipated start or completion of the building. I felt that it was a very transparent meeting. It went very well. There were some people that were excited, and I understand... I understood that very clearly. But again, I find that it's better to come in a more composed demeanor before this council and anyplace else within the city. You'll get better answers from people. There's no need to be hostile in any way or borderline disrespectful. I've never been that way, and I'm proud of that fact. I know all of you personally, and I know I can come to you at any given time and ask a question and get an honest answer. With that being said, it's... I will tell you that the particular tract of land down there, it's been a known fact since I'm a young kid, that it has always been contaminated by PSCNG. I remember the buildings on that particular tract of land, or the homes, I should say, that were there that had to be bought up by PSCNG and demolished, and then the site had to be remediated over a period of years. And that all falls under federal guidelines, too, not just city. So, with that being said, I'm sure that if Ms. Gadesky made contact with someone from that particular area of town, they might be willing to talk to her and advise her and inform her as to what was done here. But my understanding of that particular meeting was that it was not a city-sponsored meeting. It was a very informal meeting. This was a gathering point, no more than that. And that's the way I walked away with an understanding of it. Getting back to another particular subject, in regards to violence in the city, my understanding is that there are many statistics that are taken to play as to what crime is about in Bayonne. One of them is domestic violence. It's a big factor in Bayonne. But again, every city has it. It's something that we, the police department, anybody in the city administration can't control. They don't have control over what transpires in a person's home. Unfortunately, they're brought in after the fact. So, before you trash Bayonne and stand up here and say, "It's violent. It's this, it's that," it's not as bad as you think. Every city has it. They have statistics that are overwhelming, too. We're not the only people in play with this. So, instead of walking up here and publicly stating, "Bayonne is this, it's that, it's no good," it is a great city to live in. I'm happy to live here. I'm also happy with that absorption rate study and the numbers. That makes my property more valuable. I know how valuable it is, because right now, I've had several offers. On my particular home, I turned one down today. I had a near contract, and you want to know something? I'm glad I didn't accept it here, because that study proves that my home is very valuable and I'm very happy with it. So, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Moving forward, 09 through 012 have been removed. 013 is an ordinance for introduction, and it's amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 16, rent control, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, December 14, at 7:00 p.m. in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. This is to extend rent control through December 31, 2023. Resolution is moved by the council president. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
014 is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 17, property maintenance, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, December 14, at 7:00 p.m. in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Resolution is moved by Councilmember Perez. Mr. La Palusa, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer? Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
015 is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 7, traffic, and a resolution moved by Councilmember Perez fixing Wednesday, December 14, at 7:00 p.m. in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chamber as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
016 is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 21, health regulations, and a resolution moved by the council president fixing Wednesday, December 14, at 7:00 p.m. in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
017 also has been withdrawn.
Aye.
O seventeen also has been withdrawn. O eighteen is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter seven, traffic, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, December fourteenth at seven PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Who'd like to move it?
Move.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza.
Aye.
And communications is a resolution moved by the council as a whole ordering the following communications to be received and filed. It covers C one through C five. Any questions on the communications? Which one?
One, two, three, and five.
One, two, three, and five?
Yes.
So on C one, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza.
Aye.
C one is from Edward Smith, filing notice of claim alleging property damage to his car when it struck a pothole while driving on Goldsboro Drive. You have a question?
These roads were done by the developers, am I correct initially?
For the most part, yes.
Okay. Are we taking care of these potholes from the city side, or are we holding accountable the developers to do it correctly?
We would hold a developer to do roads correctly. This is what's called a notice of claim. Somebody has something wrong with their car on a city or other street, for the most part, we get a notice of claim, it puts us on notice as a requirement if there's, it gives the municipality time to investigate whether or not we're responsible, we could deny responsibility or admit responsibility. So across the board, the general rule is developers have to do the improvements. Once the roads are dedicated to the City of Bayonne, then it becomes our responsibility to maintain and repair.
And we can't go back to the developer to tell them to fix the road? Maybe they did it incorrectly, et cetera?
It wouldn't be dedicated to the city if it didn't satisfy the engineer's level of concern. So at some point, we take the road over after a developer finishes developing, if it's not going to be a private road, and then it's, at that point, it's our responsibility. Our engineers have, would provide an opinion saying, okay, the road was done correctly, the road is according to HOIL, according to the plans that were submitted, and we're happy with it. There's usually a bond that would have to be refunded that covers some unforeseen things over time. But most of these things where you see somebody filing about they were driving their car and they hit a pothole, or they, you know, number one, if we're not put on notice of that pothole ahead of time, then, and we had a chance to cure that problem, we're not responsible anyway. There's a whole thing called Title fifty-nine, and that's why a notice of claim is required under the New Jersey statutes. Title fifty-nine covers claims against municipalities.
Okay.
This is a requirement of it. We get them for trees falling, snow falling, unbelievable reasons, and some legit, like a fire truck or a police car hits a parked car while in the course of its duty, then that's our responsibility. I can't tell you whether these potholes are going to be our responsibility or not.
Did the city take over Gold Borough Drive yet totally?
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
Okay, and traffic lights should be put there and chosen for your way, just to let you know.
Thank you.
Do you have questions on the other ones?
No, the same question.
Okay, it's moved as a whole. On motion to receive and file, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza.
Aye.
C two.
C five, I have a question.
Okay, on the motion to receive, C two as a whole, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza.
Aye.
On the motion to receive and file, C three, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza.
Aye.
C five is from the Superior Court of New Jersey in the matter of Antonino Plantana versus the City of Bayonne. Plantana.
Jay, can you elaborate on this?
No, off the top of my head, I don't know what the facts are. You want to give me a call tomorrow, I'll look it up on the New Jersey Court's site, and I'll be able to give you what the claim is.
Thank you.
And to receive and file, C five, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza.
Aye.
O R one is from Donna L. Maurer, Chief Financial Officer, reporting on vendor payments and recommending payment of the same, and a resolution adopting a recommendation and ordering payment of the claims. Who'd like to receive and file it? Any questions on O R one? And on the receiving of file, O R one, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza.
Aye.
Consent resolutions is a resolution moved by the council as a whole ordering the following resolutions to be adopted. It covers C R one through C R twenty.
Ms. Kadeski?
C R five, C R ten, C R eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
Any other questions on the C Rs? And on the remaining consent resolutions, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza.
Aye.
C R five is authorizing an addendum to the Second Amendment to the Agreement Number, calendar year twenty twenty, twenty-one oh sixty-two with the New Jersey Humane Society Corp. for animal control officer, an animal control officer and animal control shelter services for a period commencing May first, 2021, through December thirty first, 2022, to one, clarify the scope of the services for the trap, neuter, and release program and conform with the terms of the TNR Ordinance Number O twenty-two dash thirty, and two, to correct the contract amount to include the language not to exceed $25,000 in order to effectuate the program as reflected in Resolution Number twenty-two oh four dash twenty dash one fifteen. Do you have a question on it?
Since Director Kavanaugh is here, I'm just wondering how the process is going. I know several meetings ago, we had speakers regarding this, and also, do we still have a contract with the Humane Society regarding other animals and care if there's an animal that's not being taken care of properly in a house?
Good evening, Council, and Ms. Kadeski. As a matter of fact, our go date is today for the TNR program to start, so we're very happy to be at this point to provide that service for the City of Bayonne. We've been working closely with Mr. Santini from New Jersey Humane, lovely gentleman, and he's excellent at what he does, and he is a true partner with the City of Bayonne.
Have you been getting a lot of calls from the residents that were here that night talking about, you know, the colonies, et cetera?
We're working together with those groups in order to get the job done, so we want to be more inclusive of the community, and we're happy to work with those groups.
So you think things will get on the ground way before winter?
We're, today's our start date, so we will be presenting through Mr. Ryan and our website as well, the process, so the public knows what the process is. And we have, already have a list of all of those groups that were here that night, and some other people that are going to come in and help us coordinate those efforts.
If more money is needed, Director, do you think you'll ask the council to, or Finance Department for additional funding?
We would love that to happen. So wherever we can get that money from, we'll try to shake the tree and have that happen. Thank you. You're welcome.
And on C R five, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza.
Aye.
C R ten authorizes the Finance Department to award $25,000 in grants in connection with the City of Bayonne's American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 Domestic Violence Grant Program to two nonprofit profits from the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds.
Just a question, and maybe Jay, you can answer this. How come this is going through Finance and not the CDBG for pay-to-play issues? Shouldn't it be going through the Community Block Grant instead of Finance?
There was a direct allocation of $25,000 by the Municipal Council a while ago for this.
Yeah, but shouldn't it still go through the Community Block Grant instead of Finance? If I recall, everything else?
The money's coming out of the ARPA funds.
Right.
Right, it's coming from the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, so this is something that was done through the city.
And through the federal government?
Yeah, but no different than the domestic violence and trying to think of other, the loans that we gave to the businesses during COVID, they ran through the City of Bayonne, not through CDBG. Not all federal funds are CDBG. CDBG is Community Development Block Grants. This is not that, not coming from that. This is coming from different funds.
Okay, and can I ask who are the two nonprofits receiving the funding?
Women Rising and Sarah's Daughters.
Excuse me, and the second one?
Sarah's Daughters.
Do we have more money in the kitty for more nonprofit organizations to receive?
You're asking if we have money available to give them right now?
No, additional, for additional funding if they need it, and for other not-for-profits.
We can review that down the road, but as of right now, they've each been given $12,500.
Thank you.
Just for your edification, I just looked up the complaint, the individual Platania, Antonino Platania, had a slip and fall or an incident at Collins Park on the jug, so some of they got hurt there.
Thank you.
And on C R ten, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Very happily aye, and I thank those two organizations for what they do.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza.
It's a great job by everybody involved, and especially our Municipal Services Director, doing a great job as always, and I vote aye.
C R eleven authorizes RFQs for professional engineering services, which is utility engineers and compliance engineering firms with experience in combined sewer systems compliance.
Is Viola involved in any of this, or is it this just the city doing this?
This is the city looking for information, looking for engineering studies in order to determine how we can best mitigate flooding. And the floodwater that, you know, right now, we need to get institutional data, like where is the water coming from, where is it pooling, what can we do to alleviate that? This is also designed to provide us with essentially an analysis that we've never done before to figure out why it's happening, where it's happening. And yes, by definition, once we have this data, Viola will be included, our engineers internally and external engineers will all be involved trying to figure out what we have to do in order to alleviate, what can we install? Are we going to separate? Are we going to build tanks? Something has to be done, but we need the underlying data, know how much water, we're talking about where it's coming from and why it's going there.
Well, if I can make a suggestion, just to let you know, that the drainage, it's not so much what, where is it not going? It's not going to the sewer, because if you take a ride around town with all these leaves, instead of, instead of some people picking up the leaves, they're sweeping them right into the sewers, right into the sewers, drive and see all the clogged. And I'm just, I'm just letting you know something, that there are county people doing that. And Viola is bringing these big buckets or hiring somebody to pick up everything that's in the sewer, and what is it mostly? It's leaves and garbage.
And that will be something that's picked up by this study. This study will say you've got a X amount of flow coming along from point A to point B. At some point, this flow slows down. Why is that? If there's a broken drain, or if there's a clog because there are leaves, garbage, debris, whatever, this will, this will bring that to light.
And how much is this going to cost?
We're going to find out when they bid. It's a complicated process, so we're looking for requests for proposals.
Thank you.
On C R eleven, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Ms. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza.
If anybody is putting leaves down, especially county workers, you should call the police immediately and report them. And just so you know, as somebody who works in the Parks Department for the county, has a lot of leaves, I've never seen one county worker put those leaves in the street. So an accusation like that is pretty wild to make. If you see it, call the police immediately and do the police action, do the right thing. I vote aye.
C R twelve is authorizing the request for RFQs for professional engineering services from engineering firms with experience in hydraulic modeling for CSO storm aid topographic related floodwater management.
Jay, what's the difference, are they working side by side? Is this side by side?
Actually, it's, there are two, two parts of this, and the, I know it says hydraulic modeling in the first one, but this is specifically the hydraulic modeling of a CSO. Joe Nichols and I must have spent five hours talking about the need and necessity and why to parse the two out. At first, we were going to do it in one resolution, but the second one is a really specialized thing that involves different application of different skills.
Are they going to be working together, or are they going to be doing their own studies separately?
Well, the first one isn't so much studies, the second one's a little bit more technical. They'll have to work with each other eventually, the work will be combined, but they'll be working on parallel paths for a while.
Thank you.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza.
Aye.
C R thirteen authorizes the advertisement for RFPs or RFQs for general traffic engineering services for a period of one year commencing January first through December thirty-first, 2023.
Specifically, what areas are we talking about?
These are for access permits relating to planning and zoning.
For what, what development?
You asked for specifics?
For the location?
I don't think this is for a specific location, this is for moving forward when they need that service.
General traffic.
Yeah, it commences January first, 2023.
So they're going to work with all new development and do a traffic study, an impact study? Is that correct?
They will be working with, yes, new development.
Excuse me?
It's for a traffic engineer. We don't know where a traffic, is that, is C R thirteen we're on, right?
Yes.
It doesn't start until January first.
Okay, so, so it's, it's something we've had in the past on an annual basis, we need someone to perform traffic studies. It could be something as simple as a condominium building coming in, and we don't really believe that the traffic study provided was, was proper, or it could be something as big as, you know, a one thousand, a hundred thousand square foot commercial building, it could be an entire development, but we need someone in our employ. building. It could be an entire development. But we need someone in our employ that we can go to if we're in need of a traffic study or traffic analysis. And we've had, since I've been here, we've had someone in that capacity.
Okay, so the developer does their study and we do our study?
Not every time, Gail. Sometimes the study is complete enough and our professionals are accepting of it. Other times, if there's pushback, you're going to have to have, we'd have our own person do it. Sometimes we're the ones doing the plan. So we've got to have our own traffic study done to back up our plan. Most of the plans that are done are plans signed by our planner, and most of the time, we want to have our traffic study and our traffic analysis associated with it.
And on that one, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
CR 14 authorizes the purchasing agent to purchase five 2022 Ford Bronco sports vehicles chargeable to account T 12-56-813-000-199 UCC dedication by rider through contract number 65 M C E S C C P S from Nielsen Ford of Morristown, New Jersey.
I'm just curious, why all these vehicles? I don't see any inspectors going in again, like I said earlier, unless they're called upon. And honestly, wouldn't it be less expensive for the city if these inspectors were able to use their own vehicles and go by the, use their own, get paid for the mileage? Is that appropriate, like public and private company?
There are, there are issues intended to insurance and liability if they're using their own vehicles. There's also problems with wear and tear on a vehicle. And it's one thing to say, we're going to reimburse you for your, but, but Gail, if there are people that don't have their own vehicles, or their wife uses their vehicle during the day. We're a city of 72,000 people. We've got a pretty substantial workload that's associated with these inspections. And to ask someone to use their private vehicle, there are some liability problems, as I said, but practically speaking, it's also difficult.
Okay, but are they going to be allowed to take these vehicles home with them at night and drive them for personal use?
I don't know, but I think in this case, I would not believe so.
Okay, if they're not being used 24 hours, where will they be parked?
I don't know how to answer that question. I'm sure that they've got to be on city property somewhere, either down at the city parking garage or underneath the building.
And they'll have to leave their personal car down there in order to get a city vehicle?
There are some people who get rides with other people in town. Again, there's a whole load of employees with different modes of getting to work. Some take a bus. I know in my, in my law department, if one person takes a bus, there's two people riding together. So I couldn't answer that question particularly.
Thank you.
And on CR 14, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
CR 15 is authorizing the purchase of a 2023 F-250 pickup truck and equipment from 1075 Emergency Vehicles, Haskins, New Jersey, through the Houston-Galveston Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Program planned for a total amount of $69,945.
I don't need to stick on that panel.
I'll take a vote on it. Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
CR 16 authorizes the amendment to agreement number CY 20-80 with the Bayonne Youth Center to provide CDBG COVID, COVID virus funds for county, community outreach services in the amount of $34,000, increasing the same in the amount of $72,000 to cover additional community outreach initiatives, making the total contract amount $106,000.
I know the next one, CR 17, is for PAL, so this is in conjunction with that. Why are we increasing one and not the other? I know KT was here talking about everything, and what's going on?
We're increasing two of them. Bayonne, remember there was a, Sam got up, Samantha Howard got up and talked about, there's additional money available. Please submit your, your requests. They did, and.
Yeah, but why so little for the PAL? I mean, you know, the other two.
You get, you get what you ask for. And they asked for $8,000. They got $8,000. They, they put justification for why they needed an additional $8,000. I believe it was to bring on two additional teachers to, to address a education, I'm sorry?
Homework.
Home, to address homework needs. The Bayonne Youth Center actually put in a more comprehensive list of things that were needed, things that were required, things that they were requesting, and they were both given the exact amount, I believe, that they requested.
Can PAL go back and ask for more money depending upon their needs?
If they didn't, I guess they could amend it and submit it at some later date, but they were told they had to get this information in.
There's usually deadlines for all these things as well.
Yeah, but so, this was their, it may have been their opportunity, I don't know, Gail, but I just know that they were told, get it in so we can access these funds and provide them to you. If they, if they asked for more money, they probably would have got more money.
Thank you.
On CR 16, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
CR 17 is amending the agreement number, calendar year 20-095, with the Bayonne P A L to provide CDBG COVID funds for childcare, their childcare program, PPE supplies, in addition to $15,000, increasing the same in the amount of $8,000 to cover the cost of two additional teachers for their after-school homework program, making the total contract amount $23,000. And on that one, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
CR 18 is directing the Director of Public Safety and/or his designate to take any and all actions necessary to prepare and submit a grant application for grant funding from the New Jersey Office of Information Technology for Fiscal Year 23 Next Generation 9/11 Grant Program.
Yes, I understand this is for the internal dispatch system. Is that right, Chief Geisler? This is for internal 9/11? Oh, sorry, Director Cooper, I didn't see you there.
That's right. It's for the 911 system, state mandated. The state came out with a mandate that every 911 system in the entire state's going to have to work under next, what's going to be called, Next Gen. It's an enhanced 911 system that every communication center will use. Every communication center will be interoperable. They'll be able to communicate with each other. Now, there's approximately 250 independent communication centers throughout the state. They all work independently with their own operation system. This is one system where they can all work together, contact each other. And we were notified by our grant writer, I believe it was last Tuesday, Millennium, that there were grants available. A lot of the municipalities complained because it's a state mandate, and they thought it should be funded. And our grant provider notified us that the grants are available. They have to be, the applications have to be submitted by December 9th. And part of the application is there has to be a resolution by the governing body that you have at least 65,000-person population. And that's the main requirement of the grant. The smaller towns, that most of them work in a county-wide system. In that instance, the county will apply for the money. But this is so that we can just submit the application for the grant.
Okay, and we're doing it directly? We're applying directly? We don't have to go through the county?
No, we have our own system. And this will permit, like, pictures being transmitted over the lines, videos, things like that.
So besides not including the matching funds that we're going to have to put out, how much do you think this is going to cost?
I don't believe, I don't know, we don't, I don't know how much, but we don't know, I don't think there are matching funds. I don't know for sure. We don't know the details of the grant. We were just notified that the grant is available. We're in a process of getting a quote for our, what we think our system will require. And depending on the limits of the grant, we'll apply for naturally the maximum.
Thank you, Director Cooper.
You're welcome.
And on CR 18, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
R19 is amending agreement, agreement number CY 22-066 with the Bayonne Economic Opportunity Foundation to increase the contract in the amount of $50,000 for this, for a total amount not to exceed $500, $5,169.96, $169.96 for the 2022 Congregate Meals Program. Gail, you have a question on that one?
No.
No? Okay. I just started pulling them out. On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
R1.
Oh, one, did you, before you, yeah, CR 20?
CR 20 was part of the ones I didn't pull.
Okay, so before you move on, I was wondering if I could ask Sue Kavanaugh, the director, to come up. We'd like to recognize our visitors here today for all their good works, and maybe you could give a little background from CR 10 for us.
Thank you, Council President, for that opportunity. I kind of missed it there with all the activity. So I just want to say that Sarah's Daughters and, and Women's Rising are two phenomenal support groups related to domestic violence that service our community. And the hard work and support, the leadership, that these two resources for our, our families and our people in our community so generously received from you is nothing short of amazing. And the work that the Domestic Violence Task Force does is good work in our community. And after meeting both of you and the several meetings that we have had, I am truly just so blown away by the depth of your commitment to this subject and your importance in our community. So I want to give you the opportunity to come up and just say a few words to the community and the, about the grant that you are receiving, and just really applaud you. This is Pastor Bertha Reels.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I'd like to say thank you. Thank you so very, very, very much for giving us the funds to help us continue the work. The work is not easy, and we survive off of donations. Sarah's Daughters began in 2010. I am a survivor of domestic violence. At the age of 16, I was sexually, physically, verbally abused by a young man who said he was 18, but he was actually 20. And he forced me to do some things that still bothers me today. The abuse altered my lifestyle. I lived a very disruptive lifestyle, but through and by the grace of God, and much prayer from my parents who thought I had ran away, but I was actually forced to stay out, forced to quit school, and forced to do some unspeakable things. And it wasn't until later in life that God is real. He does exist, and He dropped down my spirit to start Sarah's Daughters. And after I started Sarah's Daughters, I began to look back on my life, and I realized the different signs that were there that I was unable to see because I was a child and I didn't understand. And so it's very, very important that domestic violence education is brought into the school system so the young people who are losing their lives at an alarming rate will have some type of understanding when they see the violence. When someone grabs their arm, when someone asks to look at their phone and see what, who they called, or who they text, or when someone calls you on your phone five, 10, 15, 20 times a day, that is abuse. And so I just want to say thank you again for just giving us the opportunity to be a force in Bayonne, to be a force in Bayonne. I heard the gentleman earlier talk about domestic violence, and it is everywhere. But if you do not know the warning signs, you will not recognize it when you see it. It is not just physical. It is verbal. It is financial. It is sexual. And it boils down to controlling another individual. And so what we're going to do in Bayonne, we're going to bring it to the forefront. We're going to have those discussions that people have not talked about. And we're going to talk about it in the schools, outside the schools. We're going to host events. We're going to host workshops in the city. We're going to invite council people. We're going to invite law enforcement, political, political individuals to come out and support, support. Make your presence known so people will understand that you're not doing this by yourself. And it doesn't matter where you come from. It doesn't matter how many letters you have behind your name. It doesn't matter about your education, your status. It doesn't matter, because domestic violence will knock on your door, and you will not know it until it's too late. So I just want to say thank you again. I want to say thank you to my Sarah's Daughters volunteers who took the time to come out because they know how important it is. And some of them are survivors. And so I just want to say thank you to you all for doing the work, doing the work and not looking for anything in return, just looking to reach down and grab a sister or a brother or a child by the hand and tell them, yes, you can rise above this. And so I just want to say thank you. I want to say thank you to my sister Suzanne for having the courage to step into some big shoes, because those are some huge shoes when you're fighting domestic violence. And so I just want to say thank you to you, my new friend and sister, and thank you to the council. God bless you all. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. And Ms. Margaret Abrams from Women Rising?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to be here this evening. I'm from Women Rising. I'm the Domestic Violence Response Team Coordinator of Hudson County. DVRT has been in existence in Bayonne since 2001, in case you weren't, you know, sure of that. We have been responding to calls to the Police Department since then. Women Rising has been in existence for over 117 years now. So some of the services that we provide are not just domestic violence services, but we do have 24-hour hotline. We have a 24-bed shelter to house adults as well as children, but that, of course, is the additional beds, so our numbers could triple at that point. We also do support groups, English, Arabic, and Spanish weekly support groups. We do community ed sessions where I'm a One Love educator, so I go into the high schools throughout Hudson County and provide education sessions on that. I'm also a cut-it-out facilitator, so we go into beauty salons throughout Hudson County and educate the salon operators on the dynamics and the signs and the resources and services that are available. I couldn't thank you enough for offering this grant, because it's going to make a huge difference in the city of Bayonne. Women Rising, we go out and educate, and, you know, we can't be everywhere, you know, we just can't do it. I'm one person, you know? So to go into community, we wait for people to invite us. So to be able to have this grant and have to stipulate and write what it is that we're planning on doing with those funds, you know, we want to be held accountable, and we want to have, you know, everything go as planned. So being able to educate the community and make them aware of the signs. So, being able to educate the community and make them aware of the signs, the gentleman earlier had stated that, you know, not to bash Bayonne with regarding the violence, domestic violence has nothing to do with community violence because, as he stated, it happens behind closed doors. But we want to educate the community and bring awareness to the fact that community members need to be held accountable. When you hear the screams and the cries and the things breaking and you're aware of it, pick up that phone and call the police, you know, make that report. Because then what we're planning on doing with the funds is being able to equip the police officers with palm cards, so now people have the resources right at hand even if they're not going to file criminal charges or civil complaints. So, being able to get those resources out there and then being places where we can make direct contact with the clients right at the point, whether it be in the court systems, in the community. I know I'm out there educating thousands and thousands yearly, and just to be able to, following that presentation, have survivors come up and say, can I speak to you? They may not even be aware of what domestic violence is is because it's a learned behavior. They're raised in homes where there's domestic violence. So, I just hope that each and every one of you and the community members in Bayonne realize what this money is going to do for the city of Bayonne. It's going to make a huge positive impact. And just as Bertha said, and thank you, Bertha, for sharing your story and all the work that their group does as well, is, you know, reaching the young is extremely important because we want to be able to break that cycle of violence and that they enter into healthy relationships. But not only actually giving them an outlet to express what it is that they're enduring in the home as well. So, just thank you very much for your time, and yeah, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, on behalf of the city council, we really appreciate your presence in Bayonne. We appreciate all that you do for our community, and I know I probably speak for everybody where we would want to continue supporting you, so down the road, I'm sure we're going to, we're going to continue that support.
We're going to take you up on that.
Yep.
And Suzanne, if I, if I might, I apologize, Carol, but if I might, I also just want to express my deepest appreciation and admiration. You are really doing God's work, and I know that it doesn't come easy, and I know that if you're here and if you're doing it, it's because you want to be. And I know that many of you have suffered in many different ways in the past, and I just want you to know that there is a reason why you are doing this. I'm a big believer in everything happens for a reason, and if you are here, we need you and we want you. And I too thank you for working very well with Director Cavanaugh because I think there's a good reason why she is here as well, and so, and we need her also. So, thanks so much for what you do and for your dedication and for just being the people that you are.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you.
And real quick, if I, if I may, Councilman Booker here, I also, ladies, I see some familiar faces out there in that group, and I'm very happy to see you here. And on my behalf and the council, and I say this again, I'm going to echo their sentiment, anything that I can do to help your cause and move it forward and keep it positive, you have my support unwaveringly. So, I just want to say thank you for being here, and it's nice to see you.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. So, I just want to thank you very much and let you know that we, the task force, the Domestic Violence Task Force, will move forward and try to have more grant opportunities out there so we can provide these resources for the rest of the community. We love Bayonne, and we want to put in the hard work in Bayonne to make it a better place. So, I just thank you very much.
Thank you. Ready to start? So, we're now up to R1, and it's authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Richard N. Campusano Esquire of Bayonne, New Jersey for professional legal services to act as the planning board attorney on behalf of the city for a period of one year commencing January 1st for an amount not to exceed $10,800, and an addition, litigation amount not to exceed $5,000. It's moved by Council President, Mr. Booker. Will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
R2 is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Richard N. Campusano Esquire of Bayonne, New Jersey for professional legal services to act as planning board attorney in connection with developers for a period of one year commencing January 1st, 2023, payable at a rate of $175 per hour. Any questions on R2?
I lied. I just want to say Sarah's Daughters and Women Rising are excellent, excellent organizations. I too am a survivor, and I want to thank former President Nadrowski for bringing this all to light. Thank you. So, on R2, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
R3 is a resolution moved by Councilmember Perez, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Inglisino Webster, Richard Scholar &amp; Taylor LLC of Precipina, New Jersey for professional legal services as redevelopment land use council on behalf of the city for a period of one year commencing January 1st, 2023, at a cost of no more than $150,000. It's, Mr. La Palusa, will you second?
Second.
Any questions on R3? And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
R4 is a resolution moved by Council President, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Arthur D. Theobalt Esquire of Warren, New Jersey to act as special labor attorney for professional legal service in connection with the negotiation of labor agreements for, with PBA Local 7, the Bayonne Police Superior's Office Association, Bayonne Fire, Local 11 of New Jersey, FBA, FMBA, and the Fire Superior's Union, Local 211 for a period of one year commencing January 1st, 2023, for an amount not to exceed $60,000. Question on it?
Two questions, actually. I missed R3 on Jay's not here, so he's, I'm sure he's the only one that can answer that question, but on R4, I thought the contract negotiations were going through, according to Ms. Russo, who notified me that they were working diligently on the contract negotiations. Why do we need a labor attorney now? I thought we were coming to an agreement sooner rather than later. They need the contract.
I can answer that. So, the, with respect to R4, that firm's been working with the unions to get contracts, settle the net they have, with the exception of the PBA Local 7, which we're currently managing. So, I guess the former contract was up, and this is an extension.
But what's going on with the contract? It's been over two years.
I can't come to an agreement.
Well, the open, just to let you know, I don't know, I'm sure you do know, being business administrator, but the starting salary for a police officer in the city of Bayonne is just about as much as a clerk working in City Hall.
I don't agree.
That's sad.
I don't agree with that.
That's very sad.
Not true. Police make good money, so that's.
Well, I'm just, I'm just letting you know, I think they deserve a contract. They've been working their buns off in this city, and they deserve a contract.
I wish I could speak publicly about that. Thank you.
Any other questions on R4? And on that, resolution's moved by the Council President, Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
R5 is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with McManlin Scotland Embalment LLC for professional legal services as special redevelopment and land use council in connection with developers and redevelopers for a period of one year commencing January 1st for an amount not to exceed $100,000. Resolution's moved by Councilmember Perez. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
Any questions on R5? And on R5, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
I apologize, Madeline.
No problem.
And Jay is back, so maybe you can help him. Jay, I apologize. So, R5 and R3 are both approving funds to go towards land use redevelopment council. What, why do we have multiple councils?
Because one is for, we're going to bill out of developers' accounts when a developer comes in and documents need to be reviewed by our council. We shouldn't be paying for that, the developers should be paying for that.
Agreed.
And the other is, the other is the stuff that we're responsible for that we should be billed for.
I see. I understand. Okay, I apologize. Thank you.
Same thing with Mr. Campusano. You'll see that there's a breakdown for zoning board applications in connection with developers for R6. We used to do it all in one contract, and for finance and accounting purposes, we're breaking them into separate contracts now because it gets, it's harder for finance to figure out which is for which.
It's hard for me to figure it out, so I can appreciate that. Okay, that's great. Thank you very much. Aye, Madeline.
And Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
R6 is authorizing an agreement with Richard Campusano for professional legal services to act as zoning board attorney in connection with developers for a period of one year commencing January 1st, payable at a rate of $175 per hour. Resolution's moved by the Council President. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
Any questions on R6? And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
R7 is authorizing the budgetary transfer number 1 in the calendar year 2022, and this has to be read in full, and it is resolved that the budgetary transfers as set forth below pertaining to the calendar year 2022 appropriations be in the same or hereby authorized, and be further resolved that the comptroller be and hereby, is hereby authorized and directed to make said transfers accordance herewith. And it's from the administration, salary and wages $125,000, to rent control, other expenses $20,000, finance, other expenses $30,000, tax collector salary and wages $10,000, streets and roads, other expenses $40,000, health division salary and wages $25,000, from tax assessor salary and wages $10,000, law department salary and wages $25,000, to parks and playgrounds, rec salary and wages $35,000, from the police uniform salary and wages $700,000, to parks maintenance salary and wages $400,000, employee group insurance, other expenses $175,000, streets and roads salary and wages $90,000, other public work salary and wages $22,000, buildings and grounds salary and wages $13,000, snow removal, other expenses $45,000, to vehicle ma, to vehicle maintenance salary and wages $45,000, from the municipal court salary and wages $30,000, to planning and zoning salary and wages $30,000, from fire uniform salary and wages $600,000, Bayonne Historical Commission, other expenses $6,000, ABC, other expenses $1,000, city clerk salary and wages $10,000, finance salary and wages $19,160, $160, to human resources salary and wages $2,500, municipal office salary and wages $15,000, water and sewer salary and wages $3,100, law department contract, other expenses $135,000, police non-uniform salary and wages $260,000, fire non-uniform salary and wages $5,000, prosecutor, other expenses $30,300, building and grounds, other expenses $90,000, accumulated absences $76,000, and prior year bills $19,259.75. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
Any questions on R7? And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
R8 is authorizing the submission of an application. Jay, should we remove this?
No, no. This one operates independent, relates to, but it's independent of the, the authorization to go to local finance board will be independent. Come on.
Okay. So, it's authorizing the submission of an application to the local finance board pursuant to NJSA 40A colon 12, 12A dash 67G and NJSA 40 colon 12A dash 27A, parts 3.
Question? Does Gil have a question?
This is regarding the RAB, the redevelopment area, area bond? Okay. And this is relating to 1088 movie studio?
Correct.
Okay, so, now, are we going too late to the dance?
If they're still playing music, it's not too late. And, 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 and they are still playing music, we're not.
Leave it to Jay to put a smile on people's faces. But here's my, here's my thinking. Newark is doing a movie studio? Oceanport is doing a movie studio? Why are we going to take the chance of paying for this, getting reimbursed, it goes bad, we gotta, we gotta pay the bills and yet put the property back up for sale? Do we really want to take the chance now with the recession on the horizon, with inflation, with people losing their jobs? You know, construction and development and everything is going to start slowing down. We know that. That's common sense.
Understood.
You don't have to be in finance to know that.
You're asking a legitimate question.
Right.
As far as the dance music concern, we are actually ahead of a little bit Newark, and I can tell you that in Oceanport, they still haven't chosen or finalized the contract with Netflix. So, we are ahead of them. We're about two pages of music in front of them in Oceanport, and...
You're using that as, the music as an analogy, Jay?
I'm going to stick with that. You liked it before, so I'm going to stick with it. So, 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 and there's no good time to have a baby, there's no good time to buy a house, no good time to get married, you know, you just have to, and it's not a leap of faith. In this case, there, there are, it's a risk-reward scenario. And you're asking, why should we go through with this and, and put $65 million up on a 900 to a billion-dollar project? Great question. Okay, so the answer is, how are we secured? What's securing our $65 million? It's not just going to be the land itself. It's going to be land, and with that, we're going to have a provision that says if there's a default, we can just step right in. We don't have to go through a condemnation or foreclosure, more accurately, foreclosure. Number two, there's going to be a letter of credit that underscores and secures the debt. And that letter of credit, like a mortgage, you've got a background in this.
I know what a letter of credit is.
Right, so, but in this case, it's, it's, it's a letter of credit that provides cross-collateralization. You have equity, and then you have actual real property. And then, as the property gets developed, the letter of credit will be commensurately reduced because your, your, the value of the property is going up as, as the property is being built. If the property's not built, our total exposure is $65 million, and I would dare say that having the land plus a $65,000, $65 million letter of credit provides us with sufficient security. It even provides for any costs associated with taking over the property would be borne by the, the developer, so that it's really a net, triple net zero to us.
I under, I understand all that, but the bottom line is, why can't they just get a construction loan?
Well, they're getting a construction loan of an incredible proportion.
I, I understand that, so I gather they're, they're short $65 million. Is that the bottom line?
I, I don't think they're short $65 million. This is a way to ensure that the property, that the development is done in a way that's commensurate with what we want down there, how it's going to be done, the type of labor that's going to be used down there, there's going to be a union project. This is a mass, excuse me, a massive undertaking, and the city, by going after this financing, can get better rates than a private entity can. So, they'll have a construction loan that takes it out. We get, we get better rates. Are we involved in the risk? Yes, but this is a billion-dollar project that brings thousands of jobs to the city of Bayonne. So, all your questions are legitimate, but I think they're answered by, if you're analyzing this as a, as a, in a risk analysis... posture, then you're going to say, okay, what's my exposure? What's my security? I'm secured?
I just don't think that now is the time. I don't think now is the time with the risk and the reward, the pros and the cons. I really think that it would not be good for the city of Bayonne.
During the greatest run-up in the history of real estate in, in the United States, that same type of thought process and cautionary view was espoused.
Yeah.
And I dare say that, who, I didn't believe, you know, ten years ago, eight years ago, that if we put forty-four projects through the sluice and had forty-four projects approved, that forty-four projects would actually get built because I, like you, know that the, the cycle goes like this.
Yep.
We just happened to hit an eight-year cycle. Remember, nothing got built between 2001 and 2008, the first great run-up. Then from 2008 to 2014, when, after, after the world ended on Tuesday, 2008, nothing got built anymore. We had one thing built down at the, the base. And then the market changed and our outlook changed and our willingness to, again, take risk and induce people to invest in the city of Bayonne, and it was with great consternation. When we started opening up this bigot, these rooms were filled with people concerned about, well, what happens if we do too much? What happens if we don't do enough? And I, I would say that now that the market's changed, you're going to see a different approach to development on both the development side and our side. In this case, this industry, and you know that I put a lot of time into researching what the market is for this type of industry. Creating content is, right now, and for the foreseeable future, a non, it's something that's not really subject to the vagaries of the market. Building this project is, but as far as content creation, right now, and I would, I would say for the next decade, being able to create your own content and not having to, to deal with Hollywood and, and certain large corporations that would charge you for the services, and these self-contained units that where they make their own content and don't have to worry about another provider, that's the business model that's working at. Netflix lost $1.2 billion or something like that. They lost an amazing amount of money and still had, I think, I can't say bazillion, but they had a load of money in cash. They lost all these people who were subscribers, but they still made unbelievable amount of money and their stock has risen again.
Well.
So, so the, the content creation is, and why here and why the East Coast? And there are a whole lot of reasons for that. Right now, Georgia is, is a place where a lot of this is concentrated, and there's just been a paradigm change. And Netflix and the studios in Newark and in Brooklyn, they've all, they've had a different view of how this is going to go in the future. And if you're saying that you don't think the risk reward is there, you could be right, and they could all be wrong. But these are people that.
I could also be wrong, Jay, but all I'm saying is they're playing the last song. And I think the bottom line is, I don't think it's the right time. I liked their presentation, don't get me wrong. A lot of people in Bayonne did. But right now, the way things are turning in the global economy, I just don't think it's the right time.
But isn't that their risk and not ours? As long as we're secured for what we're outlaying?
Well, we gotta sell the property. You don't want to, a city doesn't want to own property like that.
But I don't need to sell the property if I have $65 million cash backing it up.
The way taxes are going here, I don't know.
Thank you.
I have a music analogy. I'm not going to use it.
The resolution is moved by the council president. Who'd like to second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
R nine is a resolution moved by Councilmember Perez approving chapter one fifty-nine, number three in the calendar year 2022 budget, seeking permission of the Division of Local Government Services to approve the insertion of an item of revenue. Mr. Carroll, will you second?
Second.
Any questions on R nine? On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Jay, R ten?
R ten is off.
I'm sorry, it's what?
Off. R eleven authorizes the mayor or his designate to review, approve, and execute a standard operating procedure and memorandum of agreement with Honeywell International, Inc. in connection with remediation of chromium-contaminated soil and groundwater at various NJDEP sites pursuant to the consent judgment of the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection dated September seventh, 2011. It's moved by Councilmember Perez. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
Any questions on R eleven? Gail's got a question.
Can you elaborate on this? Does this have anything to do with the Oak Street area?
No.
And other areas, First Street?
I don't believe it's on Oak Street. There's some on the west side of town. Donna, do you have better indication? This is the Honeywell sites.
Such as?
Yes, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, Gail, what was your question? I'm sorry. I was writing, I was writing you an email. I was responding to your email.
The areas in Bayonne that this pertains to?
The Honeywell, it's on, it's, it's on the west side. It's the, there are three separate areas. Near the Lucarelli property, there's a, there's a walkway there.
Which Lucarelli property?
Twenty, Twenty-first Street.
Twenty-first Street.
Where the old Bayside twenty-one was?
Yeah.
Where they played music and.
Yes, sixteen street park, little, there's a little spot, yeah, sixteen street park. And, and these are areas that Honeywell has taken responsibility for. There, there was contaminated film material that was put there historically many, many years ago. And they're required by Forest Water to clean up those properties. We've been working with, the city has been working hand-in-hand with Honeywell for, I mean, I think here nineteen years, for a good part of those nineteen years, to get these specific areas remediated and cleaned up to the extent required by the DDP. They've successfully done that, and right now, they're, we're sort of just wrapping up, wrapping up the last part of putting together standard operating procedures. So we have some sewer lines in the area underneath the, underneath these.
It's just the west side that's impacted on this?
Yeah, yes. Only, you know, three discrete areas. And we've put together standard operating procedures with Honeywell that will provide guidelines to our sewer workers as to when there has to be sewer repairs, if there ever has to be a sewer, sewer repair, how we're going to deal with that, which is basically, we're going to make a phone called the Honeywell, the Honeywell. We need, you know, we need to get to our sewer, you know, please light the way and, and help.
Are you working with the Falder and Viola on this project, if sewers are involved?
They know about it. I mean, my, I mean, they, they have.
Because the citizens pay, you know, water and sewer, so that's why I'm, I'm wondering.
But, but.
They, they know, they know that there are going to be standard operating procedures that are put in place for worker safety reasons. I'm not, I'm not, I haven't asked them for their input. I really don't need their input. I know, I know what has to be done. It's my background and binding of the law to protect them. They'll, they'll have knowledge of that, but my question is your question, am I?
Does Viola have to comply with what you put in the procedure, procedural manual?
Right, right. These procedures are to protect Viola workers and any, any of our DPD workers who might be in the area during the time that there has to be a sewer line there. So basically, what the SOP is really doing, Gail, is, is keeping Honeywell responsible to come to expose the pipe. If, if we have a leak, we have a sewer compromise. Instead of us, Viola coming and excavating the area and doing the fix, we're going to call Honeywell to, because it's, it's there, they've still left, you know, there's, there's still areas where there might be an exceedance, but not according to DDP. And then we're going to have them dig up the area, and then our workers, who are going to be properly, not our, not our, to mean the city, Viola is going to have workers there for their third-party contractors do work to fix it.
So in the SAP, who is obligated to report the leak or blah, 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 blah to the city? Who, who do they report it to? Who finds it?
No, no, Gail, you're completing two issues. Number one is, if there's a sewer line running here.
Yeah.
It's surrounded by what we think is contaminated material.
Right.
That there's a leak is one issue, you know, that, that's independent of the fact that there's contaminated soil around it. Once a leak is identified, we have to say, okay, it's located, and, and that would be Viola or, or someone from the city, no doubt, I was saying there's a leak. But unlike, like right outside Six Thirty Avenue City, where they could just jump right in and do the work, they know in this area, it's contaminated. So we have some SOPs that we have to observe before we break around there. So they're, they're two separate issues. And this is just the rules and regulations, the, the standard operating procedures that we'll use in case something has to be done there. And, and every worker would be put on notice of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
R twelve is authorizing the execution of a right-of-way agreement with Cable Vision of New Jersey LLC to permit the installation of ten remote optic line terminals throughout the city of Bayonne for the purpose of constructing, maintaining, and operating a fiber-to-home systems capable of providing state-of-the-art cable services and internet speed capable of surpassing the current industry standards. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
Any questions on R twelve?
Altis took over Cable Vision. Why does the resolution say Cable Vision rather than Altis?
I can answer that. Cable Vision of New Jersey LLC is the entity that is the actual limited liability company that's requesting access to our, our right-of-way in order to install these installations. I don't know about their corporate structure and why. Maybe Altis has, you know, sub-companies and Cable Vision of, of it. Cable Vision of New Jersey LLC is the entity that's requesting the access.
Okay, that's, that's just their name. Okay. You look familiar. Name and address, please.
I might add, I wonder if we could have something that mandates that they remove the old wires prior to allowing them to put up new fiber optic wires. I'm, I'm not against moving forward with the progress, and I'm all about greater technology, but they do not maintain the wires and they do not remove them once they are obsolete.
I raised that issue at the caucus. I love it. We talked to Jay, there's, it's a little bit of a gray area, but I would work with you to draft something.
I'm, I'm in.
I'd love to go forward with that.
And you know, I've dealt with that with some mutual friends.
I do.
And they all blame each other. Verizon's blaming cable.
Right. So I, I wonder if this might, so I'm, I'm not, I'm not opposed to approving this with the condition that it is contingent upon removal of any existing wires.
Well, you can't really do a contingent, but we're going to make sure through the law department that we draft something.
Well, I, I think there, there might be practical implications to that because while they're putting these new fiber optic cables in, over time, they will migrate to that, I'm sure, overall, but in the interim, the other wires will remain. And I, I guess we can, we can ask about this, but I know that there are practical considerations to take into.
We're going to contact them and somehow get them to remove the wires that are not being used. They're actually tied around poles.
That's right. The practical, the practical implication is that they are hanging all over the city, creating a danger.
So we need to at least remove the ones that are not being used, that look sloppy. They're creating a nuisance all over the town.
Great minds think alike, because I, I put, I put a provision. What you're voting on tonight is giving the mayor and the clerk the authorization to enter into an agreement in the form that is acceptable by the law department to address these issues. Part of the acceptable.
Condition.
Is going to be that they remove all of the unused cable.
In a timely fashion.
Now, whether that is going to, I'm putting that in the agreement, it's in the agreement, whether that's going to, whether that can withstand scrutiny because we, we are, you know, we're bound by the franchise agreement. And as you know, federal, federal law actually already play here. But it's something that has, has been on my radar screen for a long time, so I did include it in the agreement.
I appreciate that, Donna.
Now, I'll report back how I feel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
R thirteen is authorizing the sale of the city of Bayonne and the county of Hudson, New Jersey, of its property tax levy for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, 2022. Who'd like to move it?
Move it. I'll second it.
Any questions on R thirteen? On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
R fourteen is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Alfredo Solutions for website design, management, and maintenance services for a period of one year commencing January first, for an amount not to exceed $54,000. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
R fifteen is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Donahue, Geronda, Doria, and Tompkins for professional accounting services to act as municipal auditors for the city of Bayonne for a period of one year commencing January first, for an amount not to exceed $100,000 plus reimbursement expenses in the amount not to exceed $1,200, making the total contract amount not to exceed $100, $1,200. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
Questions on R fifteen? And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
R sixteen is authorizing the agreement with Stack Coolahan and Stack LLC for professional real estate appraisal services in connection with the state court tax appeals for a period of one year commencing January first, for an amount not to exceed $102,000. Who'd like to move it?
Second.
Any questions on R sixteen? On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
R seventeen authorizes the agreement with Bayonne Community Mental Health Center for professional mental health services to low- and moderate-income and public assistant clients for a period of one year commencing January first, for an amount not to exceed $120,000. Who'd like to move it?
Move it. Second.
Questions on R seventeen? On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
R eighteen authorizes the city to, mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Howard S. Levine for professional medical services for non-uniform employees for a period of one year commencing January first, for an amount not to exceed $15,000.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
And with nothing else.
I think we have one ad. Yeah. This is for Togas Urban Renewal. They want to have a work allowance for nights and holidays. This is in conjunction with raising the elevation.
Right, this is down at, at, at the ten eighty-eight studios. They're looking for, we, we have a restriction against performing work on national holidays. There is water-based work, essentially, it's work coming, it involves barges coming in to, to build up the site. And the request was, could they have an exemption from the no-work ordinance on federal holidays? And discussions with the mayor, he's, he didn't have a problem with it because of where it's located and the import of the, the project and the size of the project, except for Christmas Day. He didn't feel that that was.
He didn't feel that that was proper. So the, the recommendation would be for all the federal holidays, um, with the exception of Christmas.
It's six, six federal holidays. It covers three this year and three next year, um, through, like, just about the end of February. But it, it.
Studio.
The exception is Christmas. Yeah.
I do think that represents a quality of life issue. I don't know that I agree with that.
So the provision, I, so I just want to say one thing. Me too. I, I'm, I was always against holidays and, and after-hours. But this has a provision in here that the city reserves the right to declare this resolution null and void without further action of the municipal council if any justified complaints are lodged with the Bayonne Police Department, the Bayonne Law Department, or any other department within the city of Bayonne in connection with noise disturbances arising out of said construction activity. It's also an area where it's not very inhabited. There are some houses there on the boulevard. But, um, that's the reason why I would consider this.
But, and it, it's not so much construction as it is waterborne, like, it'll be coming off of barges on the west, on the, yes, the west side of the.
But is it specifically limited to waterborne work? Do we happen to have any residents here that live in that area?
No, but. Mike, you want to come up?
On the, uh, of what construction will take place? Like you say, is it, what, yeah, they're just bringing barges in and dropping dirt because the pounding that they're doing now, you know, compact that property while they're clearing up the contamination and dropping dirt and pounding it, it, that could not go on. It, it's, you hear it everywhere. And it's, people go to the park there to enjoy it and stuff. So if that pounding's going on during the holiday, but if it's just the barging dirt, there's no.
Well, I, I, I think that the caveat would be if people do provide.
Right. If there's a complaint, I would, it can stop immediately and that's it. It's done. So.